Okay, so then I will call this meeting of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting will be virtual, is allowed by an act of to extend certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency extending these provisions of the open meeting law until June 30th, 2027. The, let's see, in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law, open sessions, the BRPC commission, open sessions are recorded. Others may record after first informing the chair that they wish to do so, as long as the method of recording does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Recording the meeting without notifying the chair is not allowed. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Please raise your hand if you are. Okay, so if anyone were to record the meeting or any of the other well BRPC meetings, I just want to remind that using artificial intelligence-generated transcriptions of the meeting, that actually the approved minutes of the meeting is the official record of the meeting. If anyone's planning to present any materials to the meeting, copies must be left with the chair to be part of the record of the meeting. Copies may be provided in any form with electronic versions, always being helpful, especially in virtual meetings, and it's more easily to retain the records. So we need to begin this meeting with a roll call. Mary Ann?
Adams?
John DeWolff, alternate.
Alford? Beckett? Cheshire? Clarksburg? Dalton? Egremont?
Mary McGurn, delegate.
Florida? Great Barrington?
Malcolm Thicke, alternate.
Hancock? Kingsdale? Lanesboro? Lee?
Buck Donovan, delegate.
Lennox?
Mark Smith, delegate.
Monterey?
Laura Mensi, delegate.
Washington? New Ashford? New Marlborough? North Adams? Otis? Peru? Pittsfield?
Sheila Irvin, delegate.
Richmond? Sandersfield? Savoy? Sheffield? Stockbridge?
Christine Rasmussen, alternate.
Tarrington? Washington? West Stockbridge? Williamstown?
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor?
Doug McNally, delegate. You're muted, Malcolm.
Well, that's going to be a quick meeting. Next item on the agenda is the vote to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2025 full commission meeting.
So.
Thank you, Rog. Doug, second? Who was that? Sheila? Okay, any questions or comments or corrections to the minutes as they're included in the packet? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote.
Adams, John DeWolff?
Yes.
Beckett?
Yeah.
Egremont, Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Great Barrington, Malcolm Thicke?
Yes.
Lee, Buck Donovan?
Muted both.
Hunt Stain?
Lennox? Mark Smith?
Yes.
Monterey, Laura Mensi?
Yes.
Pittsfield, Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Stockbridge, Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Williamstown, Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Windsor, Doug McNally?
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda are comments from the RPC delegates or alternates. And I would just like to start off by stating that Roger Bolton has informed us that he will not be seeking reappointment to the commission. Roger's served for 25 years, a total of 25 years, and most recently is in chair of the Environmental Review Committee and sits on the executive committee and the SEDS committee. Even though this will be Roger's last full commission meeting, as a member, we still hope to see him around in various committees. Roger's presence will be missed, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Roger for his years of service to the Berkshires. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Roger. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've learned a lot from you.
We have. Are there any other comments from members?
Yeah, Mary McGurn has her hand up.
Sorry, Mary?
I just wanted to express the thanks of the Egremont Planning Board to the BRPC, particularly to Mark Malloy and his team. He has been working with us on a build-out map. Our last one appears to have been done in 2000. He recently previewed his work. It was exceptional, extremely helpful at this point in our second phase of zoning revisions. So again, appreciation from the planning board for work that is being really well-done and extremely helpful to us.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sure that word will be passed on to Mark. And anyone else have any comments? Okay, the next order of business should be comments from the public. Is there anyone who is not an official delegate who would like to address the meeting? Then we'll go on to the next order of business, which is presentation and discussion of the executive committee actions. These are included in page eight of the, of the meeting materials. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the executive committee actions that are, that are stated there? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go on to the next order of business, which is a vote to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the FFY 26 to 30 tip and MPO. Oh, tip at the MPO meeting, I'm sorry. So we're voting to approve the, to authorize me to approve the Transportation Improvement Program at the next MPO meeting. Let's see, Cleat or Anujia?
It will be me, Mr. Chair. I'll share my file. I have a new computer, which was given to me yesterday. I'm trying to.
Yeah, Tom, I went through this earlier.
Somehow, like, I can't, I don't have that share option.
Let's see. Is this something?
Mary Ann, do you have, can you?
Tom, do you need to, can you grant Anujia?
Oh, okay, I got it, so. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, but I don't see anyone's face, so I'm sorry about that. Okay, we'll figure that out. So to people who are new to the commission, Transportation Improvement Program is.
Can I interrupt just for a minute because there's been a request by Robert Ranzio to record the meeting? Is that okay, Malcolm?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Anujia.
Thank you. So the Transportation Improvement Program, it's a five-year prioritized, financially constrained document for the implementation of federally funded transportation projects in Berkshire region. It's, though it's a five-year document, this document is updated every year. So this fiscal year, this update is for the fiscal year 2026 to 2030. So this is, it's a Transportation Improvement Program, like, a list of projects which are going to be implemented in the Berkshire County, all the transportation, federally funded transportation projects in the next five years in Berkshire County. The document, what I'm shown here, this is the cover page of the document. It's a 108 or 120-page document. It's posted on our website. This link was shared with the commission members. So I hope you had the time to look into it. Today, I'm going to just briefly talk about what are the important projects and why it's important that commission member or the commission chair to vote. So the, so this is a requirement for every MPO to prepare this document for the implementation for the next five years. So in our case, our Berkshire MPO comprises of five, 10 voting members, and the BRPC chair is one of the voting member for, for the Berkshire MPO. The process for this update started in January, when we had the solicitation of projects for the Berkshire County, we send the letters to all the terms. And based on what projects we receive, the BRPC staff, who is also the staff to the MPO, did the analysis of those projects, did prioritize, and evaluated those projects, did prioritization, provided different scenarios to the MPO, and the MPO chose one of the scenario to include in the 2020-30, 26-20-30 document. And today, what I'm presenting here on the map, what shows here, are the list of all those projects that are included in 2026 and 30. So this year, the new project which, which went in was in 2030. It was a Great Barrington, Route 7 and Route 23 project, which was a new project, and the MPO chose that project to be in 2030 in the 2026-2030 document. As, as I have shown here, this document comprises of 71 projects that to be implemented in next five years in Berkshire County, out of which there are 17 bridge projects, 18 highway projects, two bike trail projects, 34 transit projects, with the total cost of $356,517,214 to be implemented for these projects in next five years in the Berkshire County from federal fiscal year 2026 to 2030. So this is, that's the summary of all the projects in the area. What the MPO does is, this comprises of some regional targets which the MPO has choice, like they can do the prioritization. So we receive the, Berkshire MPO receives a regional target for each year for the next, that five years. The total amount for this year in the five years was like 62.5 million. It ranges from 10.2 to 30 million each year. So out of that 62.5 million, we were only able to program four and a half project, highway construction project in Berkshire County. So you can imagine the construction costs for the highways have increased so, so much in the past few years. So with that, the MPO did have, and the new project was the Route 7 and 23 in Great Barrington. That's the summary. Here in this map, I'm just briefly going to talk about what are the projects, how the projects are implemented in different areas of Berkshire County, towns in Berkshire County. In this map, the line indicates the highway projects, a dot indicates the bridge projects, a dash line indicates the bike trail project, and the plus sign is for intersection projects. And I haven't listed here the transit project because those are more like buying buses and like, so, which can be shown in the map. So I'll briefly go through North County, Central and South County. So shown over here in this map, in, in North County, under our, using our regional target, we have the Aston Street improvements or reconstruction in North Adams. North Adams also has two bridge projects included in the tip. One of the bridge project is the Route 2 on Housick River and Route 8, the bridge, which is a very big project. And also, we have a bike trail project within North Adams and Adams from, from the current extension all the way to the Hodges Cross Road. And in Cheshire, Adams, for the highway project, we do have resurfacing of Route 8. And in Lanesboro, we do have resurfacing of Route 7, and we have few, one bridge project in Lanesboro. We have two in North Adams and one in Savoy. I think the Savoy Bridge Project is, I don't have the name. I have a list in the document. I don't have the name right now with me. So moving on to the Central County. In Pittsfield, we have few highway projects, the East Street project. We have two sections of the East Street project. One was already in 2025. And then in, in the 26-30, we had the other section of East Street, which is from Lyman Street to N Street. This project includes expansion of that street, adding a multimodal, like bike lanes and sidewalks. And we also have two bridge projects in Pittsfield, one on Pontus Avenue, and the other is on South Street, the, over the Housatonic, Housatonic River and the railroad on South Street. And also in Dalton, we, for the highway project, we have Dalton Division Road reconstruction, which is in 2028, 29. And moving on to South County, we do have a bridge project in Washington. In Lennox, we have an intersection improvement that is more on a safety improvement on Route 20, at Plunkett Street and Blount Iron. And also, we have a bridge project in Lee. One is a Mill Street, and the other is, is on Silver Street Bridge in Lee. And we also have a bike trail project in Lee, which is, which is from Warner to, to Center Street in Lee. And then we do have a bridge project in Stockbridge. In Great Barrington, we have three bridge projects, and also, as I said, under, in 2020, 2029, 2030, we do have Route 7 and 23 reconstruction in Great Barrington. That's a new project in the tip. And we do have a bridge project in Monterey and in Egremont, which is in 26 and 20, completing in 27. We have Mount Washington Road in Egremont. That's the first phase of the Mount Washington Road in Egremont. And we do have a few, three bridge projects in Sheffield. One is on Calsei Road, the other in County Road. And then we do have one bridge project in Sandersfield. These, this is the summary of $356,517,214 invested in next five years in Berkshire County for the transportation improvements. So I, so I request the commission to allow the chair to vote at the MPO meeting to approve this document.
Before we entertain a motion, are there any questions for Anujia about what she presented as far as the tip?
Just a question whether any of this money is in danger because of what's happening at the federal level, or do we have these funds at hand?
At least we have the funds for the first year. That's for 2026, and we have said, like, so far, everything is good until they have any other information, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the 2026-2030 tip at the MPO meeting.
Still moved.
Thanks, Doug.
Second. Christine can have it.
Yeah, I heard Buck first.
Fine.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's proceed to a vote.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mary Ann's from.
Yeah, I just had unmute myself.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, yes?
Okay, Ron Ranzio? Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Thicke?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Laura Mensi?
Yes.
Charlotte Irvin?
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Doug McNally?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next order of business is a vote to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2026 Unified Planning Work Program at the Metropolitan Planning Organization Meeting. This material starts on page 13 on your packet. Anujia, is this you again, or is this?
No, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be me.
You've got the wrong person every time.
That's quite all right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide the commission with an overview of our 2026 Unified Planning Work Program. You know, as, you know, included in the title of the document, this is essentially our work program for the upcoming federal fiscal year that really delineates, you know, where our focus or activity is going to be on. For the benefit of the group, just a refresher, the Unified Planning Work Program is divided into four elements. Each of those elements have a number of tasks associated with them. In total, there are 22 distinct work tasks in this coming year's work program. The first element is what we refer to as the management element. It kind of handles, you know, the day-to-day activities that we are involved with. We have the UPWP development as well as the tip delineated as tasks. There's a public outreach in a Title VI activity that is also included as part of that. We also have a technical support task, which allows us to conduct GIS activities, data analysis, collect traffic counts. We have a travel forecasting and analysis task. And we also have a payment management task. And, you know, that's something that is of benefit to the communities, and we like to, you know, continue on in our effort of providing these services to the communities. Under planning studies, we've got special studies, and in a moment, I'll talk a little bit more about that. I think, as everybody is aware, you know, bicycle and pedestrian activities are of great interest to residents of the Berkshires, and we do spend a significant amount of time facilitating those activities. We actually are also involved with transit planning in conjunction with BRTA. And I think most everybody is aware that we are conducting a microtransit feasibility study this year, and we hope next year to be involved with implementation of a program. We're involved in traffic safety under this task. We've got a resiliency and sustainability task. We're involved with freight and rail efforts, along with performance measures related back to the federal requirements. And then last but not least, we have sort of an other activities, sort of a catch-all element that focuses on land use and transportation planning, local technical assistance, where we assist communities on transportation-related issues. We've got a scenic byways task. And then we also have a secondary task related to expansion of transit and rail services. And then last but not least, we have an intergovernmental coordination task. Moving on to the highlights of this coming year's Unified Planning Work Program. Under our special studies task, we are including an ITS feasibility study. ITS is sort of an acronym for Intelligent Transportation Systems. Really what this is focused on is to incorporate new technologies into the transportation network to the traffic signals, and in some instances, also including driver feedback boards. We've identified Route 7 through the central part of Pittsfield as our study area for this coming year. We also recognize the need to conduct a crosswalk inventory. Another task related to data collection is the development of a data catalog. We've, you know, got a whole variety of data pieces here, there, and everywhere. But we don't have a catalog that really outlines, you know, what that data is and what it consists of. So we feel that there will be a value in developing this data catalog. And then last special study effort relates to the Department of Public Works and conducting a needs assessment study. Really, what the intent and focus of this is, is to work with the local DPW supervisors to get a better understanding of what their needs are so that we in turn can move in a direction of assisting them in their jobs. The other area that we'll be focusing on relates to transit and more specifically rail service. There is proposed an economic study for the northern tier that is moving forward in conjunction with Furcog. And if that receives funding, we'll actively be involved with them as a partner in that study effort. The Berkshire Flyer is going to continue on this year and hopefully into the next year. We, you know, are going to continue to be involved in that effort because it is important to the region. And we can't forget the West-East Rail Service Implementation. That's, you know, moving forward. A lot of the focus seems to be on Springfield and Points East, but we want to, you know, continue to, you know, work with Mastot to make sure that they don't forget us out here. And then as sort of I alluded to a little bit earlier ago, we're conducting a microtransit feasibility study. The next step would be to move forward with implementation. And by having this delineated as a task in the UPWP, it will allow us to continue to focus on that. In the realm of pedestrian and bicycle planning, we will be receiving an extra $89,000 to program in this year's plan to conduct a consultant-led feasibility study for the Alshulto Cook South study, and this is from Pittsfield South. That area hasn't received a lot of attention, so we want to work to, work with the communities to more refine the alignment of the Alshulto Cook Trail. And I think most of you are also aware that we did receive notification of a Raze Grant Award. It's temporarily on hold. Presuming that that does move forward. This task really is to provide time to go through the contracting arrangements with the feds until we are able to access money to administer that grant. And then last but not least, safety. Safety continues to be, you know, something that there, you know, is of great importance to the region. We've completed a comprehensive safety. We've completed a comprehensive safety plan. And, um, we've established a Vision Zero Subcommittee to provide guidance in that initiative, and this will allow us to continue those efforts on, uh, as it relates to safety planning. Really just one more slide to share with the group. This is the preliminary budget for this year's Unified Planning Work Program. I'm gonna scroll down a little bit. We've got, um, a total of $894,607 between staff time and direct expenses. What this really helps to do is to show where the level of effort is going to be expended in terms of personnel time. And having said all of that, um, I'll open it up to any questions that anybody may have. In your backup material is a copy of the draft Unified Planning Work Program, which will be released by the MPO at their May 27 meeting, and then in June on the 24th, we'll look for them to adopt that. Thank you.
Hey, does anyone have any questions for Clay? Any comments about the Unified Planning Work Program? Well, thank you for all that information, Clay.
You're welcome.
The, uh, so I want to entertain a motion at this point to authorize the BRPC chair to vote to approve the October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2026 UPWP at the MPO meeting.
Second it.
Okay, um, that's a second. Did someone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, are there any other comments or questions or discussion? Okay, then I think we can proceed to a vote.
Andubal?
Yes.
Rob Razio? Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fek?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Laura Menzey?
Yes.
Cheryl Urban?
Yes.
Christine Rosmussen?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
And Doug McNally?
Doug, give me the.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I just also want to point out at this point that if you're following along on the agenda, um, I think there's like a 30-minute gap between items four and five on the agenda, so we are remarkably ahead of where the, where schedule says we're gonna be. So if anybody has any questions, please don't hold dawg. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda, though, is the vote to submit the 2025 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy or SEDS Performance Report. Laura, do you have something to say?
Yes, I'll be sharing a presentation with you all. I guess the pressure's off to finish by 8:15, so that's good. As most of you know, we are operating under a five-year Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Berkshire County. It is the guiding document for our federally designated Economic Development District, and we provide updates to the SEDS, which is how we usually refer to it annually to the Federal Economic Development Administration. The full draft document begins on page 65 of your meeting packet for this evening, but I am going to just share, um, a few items, some data points, and some information about what we are tracking along the way to give you a sense of what this document includes. And we have, uh, two members of the SEDS Committee with us tonight, Tom Metusco and Roger Bolton, and I welcome either of you to chime in or add things where I may have forgotten something. I'm gonna share my screen. And once somebody lets me know that that is visible, I'll get started.
You got it.
Okay, great. So in the, um, the full five-year document, there is a significant amount of data that we track and summarize. And when we do these annual reports, we really look at just a handful of those. So if you're looking for really thorough information, the five-year document is the best bet, but there are some things that we want to make sure that we're looking at each and every year to ensure that we have a clear understanding of trends. One of those, if I can get my slides to advance, is median household income. And in this regard, um, we have seen, well, the most, I should share first, that the most recently available data is the five-year ACS through 2023. And in, as of 2023, Berkshire County's median household income is $72,565. This is an increase from 2022 of about 4% or a rise of just over $2,800 per household on average. However, um, it's important to note that the county still trails behind the national and the state's median incomes. In the draft document, you'll note that we have also started to look at some comparative communities that are further afield. In the past, we've always just looked at neighboring counties and those that are adjacent to us, but there's some really interesting information around comparable counties that are similar to us in terms of our size, our population density, and the kinds of industries that we host and that are particularly important to our economies. So if you have any questions about that additional data of the comp communities around the country, I'd be happy to speak with you about it, and I'm sure that Mark Malloy would be as well. When it comes to per capita income, um, we appear to be doing slightly better, and a lot of this, um, change as compared to the house, median household income can really be attributed to the fact that we have smaller household sizes than many of the places that we're comparing with. But in this case, um, our per capita income as of 2023 was $47,668, um, lower than Massachusetts, which shouldn't be of any surprise to anyone, but higher than the US per capita of 43,289. We are also higher in per capita income than most of the adjacent counties. So we, we tend to look better in this statistic than we do when we look at median household income. One of the reasons that we pay such close attention to per capita income is because it is one of the EDA's criteria when they are looking at whether a region is distressed or not, economically distressed. They look at per capita income, and they look at 24-month unemployment rates. So you'll probably remember that over the past few years, I've shown you maps of Berkshire County shaded to show which communities, um, qualify as economically distressed based on those two data points. And I'm going to first show you what it looked like when we submitted the SEDS a couple of years ago, and remember, this is using data from 2022. Oh, excuse me. Yes, uh, through 2022, and in some cases, we had to use some older data, but it reflects the conditions, um, of the pandemic, essentially. And so when we filed our 2023 through 2027 SEDS, the entire county was meeting the distress criteria, uh, based on 24-month unemployment rate. And then we had several communities, far more than normal, um, qualifying under per capita income. Last year, this is what the map looked like. And this year, we've had a couple of changes. One is that Adams has come back onto the map as distressed. That is, um, I would say typical. It was unusual last year that they weren't on the map, and instead of Hinsdale, we have Cheshire qualifying, um, based on 24-month unemployment rate. So we continue to watch this. In terms of communities coming on and off the list, it is not unusual, and there have been several different scenarios over the last decade or so, but it is the first time in my recollection that Cheshire has been amongst the, the communities that, that qualify, except for that one year when the entire county did. We also take a look at our SWOT analysis. We look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and that whole process is done extremely thoroughly during the five-year cycle. In the intervening years, we're really only looking to see if something that we named as a strength has, uh, experienced some sort of negative impact, and do we need to, you know, make note of that? Or if there is an opportunity that has come to fruition, is that now a strength? This process was, um, very meaningful, I think, for the committee this year, and I've just shown one example from each category, but if you look at the draft document, you'll see about a page and a half's worth of different things that we wanted to make note of, either new strengths, weaknesses that we had increasing concerns about, and certainly grid capacity is a good example of that, that is, is going to have a larger and larger impact on businesses' ability to grow here on the ability to provide, um, EV charging stations, especially anything in the, in the faster classes. And also looking at opportunities, as you all know, the Economic Development Bond passed in late 2024, um, has a lot of promising potential programs that we could take advantage of in the region, and there's also a very strong list of earmarks within the economic bond that we are doing the best we can to help try and leverage and get actually incorporated into the capital investment plan of the state. And then as an example of the threats that we've listed there, there is the concern of what municipalities are facing in terms of increased fixed costs and certainly insurance is a, is a commonly discussed issue, but there are others as well. Um, and, and you're all very well aware of how those things are impacting the process of developing your budgets for next year and beyond. We also, in the five-year SEDS, set several goals for the region, and this comes of surveying and discussions and interviews and focus groups, and it's not BRPC staff coming up with, uh, you know, the intentions for the region, but really a group effort that is led by the SEDS Committee, and this is just a quick list of what those goals encompass. One of the responsibilities that we have is to track activity that is moving us towards achievement of these goals. And so I've quickly added, um, a few bullet points under each goal of things that we have noted over the last 12 months are helping Berkshire County, um, move towards healthier population, including the opening of a new urgent care in Lenox, the home modification loan program that we have seen incredible, um, growing interest in, which allows people to modify their homes, enable, and enable people to, to age in place. Um, and then a significant grant that the city and City of Pittsfield and Berkshire Health Systems had recently secured, um, to provide, um, more consistency for Berkshire Medical Center. The resilient communities goal, a handful of the representative activity that we've documented, um, over the last 12 months includes recapitalization of the revolving loan fund, a strengthening of, of planning capabilities in the town of Lee with the addition of a town planner and, and soon-to-be hired assistant for that department. And we've also seen, um, I think, a really promising interest in more collaboration between BRPC, the Selectmen's Association, and the Municipal Managers Association in working together, and we are starting that out with a series of networking opportunities throughout the year. I don't want to read each of these to you, but there are examples. I've only picked three for each goal, um, from the long list that we have in the draft document, and I think what I want to emphasize here is that we don't realize how much is happening in the county and how many positive improvements and developments and investments are happening unless we can look at them sort of all at once. And, and this is not by any stretch a, uh, an exhaustive list, what we have in the draft document. So it is always encouraging to me at this point in the year and the cycle to look back at news clippings and emails and information that I've gathered to see how much is happening in the county that's really making a positive difference. I think one of the most visible projects is in the city of Pittsfield with the William Stanley Business Parks Site 9 remediation and, and preparation for investment and development. And, uh, it's also very exciting to, to know that funding has been secured for Site 7 and 8 as well. We track priority projects that have made their way onto the list in the SEDS, and some handful of the ones with some notable progress are listed here. Um, over the last year, uh, we have, and this is something that BRPC has been strongly involved in, the Berkshire Mobile Farmers Market is entering its second year. This has been extremely well-received and a great way for farmers' market, um, produce and products to reach communities that they wouldn't otherwise, um, and reach people that they wouldn't otherwise. Um, another, of course, one to celebrate is the opening of the outdoor center at Greylock Glen last fall. Um, and let's see, I think I've, I've talked about a few of these, but also, um, I just want to, um, mention the significant demolition and construction progress at Eagle Mill in Lee, which we all know has been, um, a long time coming and hard fought and hard won. So. We did remove a few priority projects, two of them because they're either near completion or complete, and then one because it was discontinued. This is another opportunity for us to keep track of what's happening in the region and make sure that it's not a five-year span between our conversations with project proponents. And then we also added a, a priority project this year at the request of the town of Great Barrington, um, and that is to be involved with and to consider options for supporting creative thinking around the Simon's Rock Campus redevelopment. Uh, I see that Doug has his hand raised, so I'm happy to stop and address that question.
Finish your thing, and when you're done, I'd like, I'll jump.
Okay, sure. Um, I am almost done. Here we are. The last slide is next steps. We always ask at this stage that we be permitted to make a few additional tweaks, edits, corrections, and if some, uh, exciting news comes out before the end of June to be able to add more to a report of everything that the county has achieved over the last year. Um, but we would like you to endorse submission of this draft document with minor changes to the Economic Development Administration by the end of June when it's due. Doug, should I keep my slides up, or is it okay for me to stop sharing?
You can stop sharing.
Okay.
I just, I just want, when, when you were looking at the one slide about the, the future-ready workforce, one of the things you cited was, was the Berkshire Workforce Board's youth works, uh, programs. Heather Williams has, has been doing that for years and years and, um, pull the disclosure, I've been the chair of the Youth Council of Workforce Board for 20 years, I think. And Berkshire County's model is a statewide model because we have every high school in the county involved in a connecting activities, uh, program with a school-based program. And this year, the, uh, And this year, the uh DESI had decided that the connecting activities funding could not be used for school-based programming. It had to be uh students directly interacting online with employers. Um, I think we have that battle beat, but it may be something we want to keep in touch with the two Heathers at the Workforce Board in case we need to weigh in, because employers love this program and DESI just doesn't get it. Uh, right now, a bunch of the other Workforce Boards have have weighed in also that they're ill-advised in changing their funding. But it's just, I, I want us to be ready in case we need to weigh in and say, this is a great asset to Berkshire County and, and you can't dismantle our school-based programs.
Well, thank you for flagging that. I will absolutely reach out to Heather Williams um and learn more about the situation and ask to be kept involved. Um, I, I, from my understanding, we also are the only region that has every single middle school um involved in the program as well. So I agree that it's crucial um and should be held up as an example, so thank you.
A- among the Workforce Boards, we are the model. I mean, we, we, we are the, the gold-plated example. But um, the others are trying to uh replicate it and then suddenly being told, no, you can't use the funding to do that. So that, they're, they're jumping on too. And Heather, at our last meeting, Heather uh Bolden uh said that, that she thinks enough boards objected that we're okay, but if it comes back, just have it on our radar that we, we might want to weigh in, because the employers also feel very, very good. So thank you.
Okay, well, and it's so hopeful to know this, because, you know, when when something is named as a priority project in the SEDs, it doesn't mean that there's any guarantee of funding. It doesn't mean that we have any funding to hand out to it. But it is extremely meaningful when people are filling out grant applications um or, you know, pursuing private funds, whatever it may be, to be able to stay, this is an identified priority of the county. And that has been a SED's priority for as long as I'm aware of. And I think we would be happy to um state that plainly to whoever would listen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from Lauren?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Sure, John.
Just related to the Appendix A, I'll start there.
Appendix A, okay.
Yeah, in the uh last column, the threshold calculation, what is the formula for that?
I'm just gonna get to the same page, so I can make sure I'm, yep. Okay, unemployment, okay. So I should be, I should be actually uh making that clear, so thank you. Um, if a locality is more than one percent uh higher in their unemployment rate over twenty-four months than the US, then it is considered distressed. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yep, okay, so if the US is at three point nine over the same timeframe, then Adams is considered distressed because it's one percentage point or more, and it's four point nine. Cheshire, five point one, North Adams, four point nine.
Okay. Uh, to continue on to the Appendix B, I'm just curious about the Census Trac Table Five, which has, it's in the first column. Uh, like for communities, uh Pittsfield has several, Adams has three, for example. So the, so how, the Census Trac, are those federally identified as part of the Census?
They are, yes, and they've been pretty consistent. Um, Tom would be able to speak better than I of whether any of our tracks have been remapped in recent history, I don't believe so. So these have been the same borders for recent history.
Good.
Yep. And we track this particular data point by tract instead of municipality uh because, A, the, the data's available at that granularity and we want to understand neighborhoods as opposed to entire communities that can differ so broadly. Um, but also because if we were basing it on the aggregated municipal numbers, we would miss economic distress that is happening in our region um and miss the opportunity to put that in front of the Economic Development Administration. And when they look at a grant application, they want to uh invest in areas that have long-term distress. So we don't want to miss the opportunity to point it out if it exists and acknowledge it.
Okay, I ask these questions in case I'm asked, of course.
Sure, yes.
Um, the Appendix C, the next page.
Yep.
So what you just uh indicated that, like for North Adams, there is a uh neighborhood, a tract that did meet um the per capita income, income threshold, but the rest of the community did not. So I, I look at the Appendix C, it says economic distress criteria map. And what is, what is the criteria for uh again, to be um identified as economic distress?
The only, yeah, the only two criteria that EDA currently uses are per capita income and twenty-four-month unemployment rate averages. Now, there is a proposal uh at the federal level for EDA to add some other measurements of economic distress, but that has not been implemented yet.
Okay. And I think I just have one more in regards to page thirty, thirty-nine and, and one of the projects identified.
Okay.
The Curtis Fine Paper Building uh site. Uh, the town does have ownership of that um parcel.
Okay.
So the last status was that it, it wasn't land court, but the town did uh eventually, um, we do own that property now.
Okay, did you, are, you're going on to page forty? Have I captured that ownership change? I think I may have captured it in the twenty, yeah, I think it's captured on page forty, but I will double check, yep.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, thank you, John.
Thank you for reading it, John.
I gotta talk, I get a lot of questions usually, thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to join you for questions if you would like.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, as the only voter here who's a member of the SED's committee, I'm very happy to move that the commission endorse the document, approve it, and send it on to the EDA, subject to the provision that staff may make minor changes to reflect new development after this meeting, new developments and information after this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Roger. We have a motion, how about a second?
Oh, second.
Hey, thanks. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, are there any others, is there any other discussion and comments? Okay, let's proceed to a vote.
Dan DeWolff?
Yes.
Rob Grazio? Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Laura Mancy?
Yes.
Shell Urban?
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
Doc McAllen?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Um, the next order of business is uh a vote to adopt the uh BRPC uh budget for FY twenty-six. Uh, this begins, I think, on page one twenty-five of your handouts. Um, this uh uh budget was recommended uh uh by the Finance Committee to the Full Commission. Um, we did look, take a look at it and um uh, and I think it's a rather conservative budget in the sense that the revenue that uh uh shows up in the budget is revenue that uh um uh the staff feels fairly certain is achievable. Um, Buck, do you have anything you'd like to say on this or?
Um, well, as usual, Marianne does a fabulous job with this, I gotta say that, her staff and her in particular. And like you were saying, um, it, it's very conservative. She, she only has in there assets that we will be getting. Um, anything that is questionable, I believe she is not added in there, because um, we, we just don't know what it's with the uncertainty, you know? So it, it looks good, as usual.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Marianne or Tom, do you have anything else to say on it?
No, I just would like to highlight, you know, you'll see on the expense side that our, our computing costs have, have gone up. We've made that transition to the cloud, we're continuing to make that. Um, and that will hopefully uh remove some of the future costs related to servers going forward and those types of things. But that was a notable increase in expenses this year.
All right, any other questions? Anybody have any questions or comments about the budget? I will entertain a motion to a, adopt the budget for FY twenty-six.
Don't move, Doug.
Nice, Doug. Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, thanks, John. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any comments? Okay, hearing none, let's proceed to a vote. Marianne, please.
Dan DeWolff?
Yes.
Rob Radidale? Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Laura Mancy?
Yes.
Shell Urban?
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
And Doc McAllen?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the authorization for the Executive Committee to act on behalf of the commission. Um, I don't think this is a vote that we take here. Uh, this has to be um authorized by each town. Uh, we need twenty-two votes, this is an annual renewal uh that we have to do every year to uh really keep the commission going. Uh, the Executive Committee meets uh every month, uh takes a lot of actions in the interim, as you've seen in your packet. And uh without this authorization, uh we wouldn't be able to do that. So uh, Tom, maybe you want to talk about what the process is here?
Well, there's a, a, a three-way process. They, we, you know, sent out a, you know, a fillable form you can uh complete, you can send in the paper ballot, or um actually, even if we just got a simple email saying um that you're gonna, you know, that you authorize us, we're really just trying to um, you know, get, get the information in. I, I'm, I, I do wonder, though, um, it's a pretty high bar, twenty-two out of the thirty-two, and we struggle sometimes. And in fact, some of our communities don't really have a, an appointed delegate or alternate. And I do wonder if that's something that we should be considering, looking at in our bylaws um going forward, to maybe make it a simple majority. Not, not now, uh, it'd be a little bit too late, but going forward. Just want to encourage you all to, to get that, to get those forms in, really.
Yeah, and there's, the deadline is really the end of June. I mean, we, we have to start the next fiscal year with uh, uh, with that authorization, so.
Right, because we kind of put the pressure on. We've got the next Executive Committee in July first uh targeted, so um, this really is gonna really put the pressure on.
Could we not just take the vote of the delegates present now to get us on record and start the process?
What would you think of that, Tom?
Um, I think we need that written authorization, is what the bylaw says, so.
But everybody who's here can sign it and email it in.
Yeah, it's in, it's in your packet, open it up. Maybe since we're ahead of time, maybe we can all take five minutes and do it right now.
Good idea. So uh, if you don't do it right now, do it as soon as this meeting is over. You've, uh, you'll probably have at least twenty minutes that you had scheduled for this meeting that uh you can. We can take a few minutes, though, if everybody wants to do that now.
Well, Malcolm, I'd just like to remind people that it has to be the delegate.
It does, it can't be the alternate, yeah, yeah.
Or in the absence of a, a delegate, it can be the alternate delegate.
I thought that meant that there is no delegate appointed.
Well, we have a few of those communities, Roger.
We do.
Unfortunately, we do.
Okay.
Not, not too many, but some.
There was two.
And that actually brings up a related topic is I, I really want to, you know, that the way our delegates and alternates are, are um, we get them is, again, the Planning Board votes to send a representative as the delegate. Um, that should be annually, but it doesn't necessarily have to be annually if someone wants to continue on. But we need to get some kind of a record of that. Um, but alternate delegates do need to be appointed annually uh by the chief elected officials, most likely the Board of Selectmen or Town Manager or the, the, the mayor. And I do, if you're an alternate delegate, um, it's really important to get that. Um, you know, that, that approval, we'll get those forms out um really quickly as well, so we can start that process earlier than we have. I think last year, we were behind, uh.
Tom, could I suggest that you send out the form? I, I found it, I can't, but for, for me to figure out which page I need to print out to stand and sign, send back, I might be wasting a lot of paper. Maybe you could send out to all the delegates a standalone that form so that we could send it back.
I sure will, I can do that definitely, yep.
A lot easier.
Okay.
It's hard to extract EBS pages.
Now, do you think that the fillable form would be okay? Uh, can you use, use that and email it back? That's what we tried last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay. Or, or however you get it to us.
Get the word. Okay, delegates only, though, it has to be delegates. Thanks, thanks for that, Roger. Okay, I think we can go on to the uh next order of business, which is uh report and discussion of the Executive Director's Report. Um, I'd like to talk about uh town meetings, but uh, uh, before we do, let's just, uh, I'd like to mention a couple of things on the report. Um, the fifth Thursday, uh, which uh is coming up uh at the end of this month, uh, sounds like a really uh good uh topic. Um, uh, Tom, this is uh, was this like an omnib- uh, previously, it was thought of as kind of an omnibus position? Or um, the, uh, I'm talking about the mass integrated land use strategy?
Yeah, the, 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 the way I understand it, you know, again, we've, the state has had a lot of plans with this uh, the Healy administration over the last couple of years. You know, they have the housing plan, they've got the energy plan, they've got, you know, this, this economic development plan. Um, and what, to me, as I read these, they don't seem to always be consistent with each other. And sometimes I think they're, they're conflicting. And so this integrated land use strategy is supposed to, you know, resolve those issues where they might not be consistent or be uh conflicting. And, you know, so it really is to tie things together uh so that if we're talking, you know, maybe about, you know, the, the, the state has a statewide transportation plan. If we're talking about a statewide transportation plan, how does it relate to where new housing development is supposed to be going? Because we're going to be getting, you know, regional targets for housing development, how's that going to work? And then same thing with, you know, renewable energy. If we're gonna have If we're going to have this, other massive amounts of renewable energy that we need, how's that going to reconcile with the resilient lands plan, which said we need to conserve, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of acres of forestry in the state or farmland? So, you know, we, we, there's a farmland protection plan that's out there. How does that work with, with solar fields or, or, you know, battery storage areas and those types of things? So that's, that's what this plan is supposed to be doing. And I think it would be important to get good attendance here to kind of have the person from EEA hear our concerns. Because, you know, I think that there's, there could be some changes.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, it's, it just seems to me that pushing the needs of urban areas to put solar in rural when easily pass a, a local planning thing that any big box store needs to put solar on the roof of, of this, of the building or, or something like that, or cover their parking lot with solar array, and it would not impact farmland.
Okay. And I think, yeah, and that's May 29th. If you haven't signed up, do. If your entire planning board hasn't signed up, get them.
And I just added the link to reservations in the chat.
Oh, great, thanks. Also, there's a, in your packet is a list of BRPC committees. We'll be looking at the committee membership again next year, so if you're interested in a committee, please, please let Tom know or Laura know or committee chairman, if you know who the chairman are. The other thing on the report is town meetings. I would like to begin by reporting a little bit about what we did in Great Barrington. We dovetails with what was mentioned earlier as far as the closing of Simon's Rock. Simon's Rock is like 275 acres in a residential zone. So none of the buildings there, the gyms, the, the theater that's very popular and used by the town, you know, none of the other food service, maintenance, housing or the dorms, none of those would be allowed at all in those, in that zone. So at our recent town meeting, we passed a campus overlay district, which allows by right most uses of the existing buildings and then expands through special permit other uses, which would allow new buildings in the, in the zone. I'm not going to go over all the detail, but it did pass at our town, town meeting. And without that zone zoning change, they would have pretty much only been able to sell that property to another educational institution. So anybody else have anything to talk about what their town meeting did with zoning?
I could talk a little bit about what happened in Lennox Town Meeting in terms of amendments. We had a mobile food establishment bylaw that we created. That's a food truck bylaw, basically, in response to the previous town planner, town planners' request for one, as there were food trucks showing up and parking. And that passed. We also had, we had tried to get three other zoning bylaws to the, to, to the annual town meeting without success. One was an institutional uses rewrite. One was a fencing modification revision, which is, for some reason, is proving to be a little tricky. And, you know, heights offenses and, and locations offenses. And the fourth one was, I'm, I'm starting to forget this one. I'll have to, it's been busy in there this, this winter with all these, and, oh, the sign by law, of course, I mean, I should remember that one, I helped write it. We have a comprehensive sign by law, which was requested from a previous building inspector about 10 or 12 years ago. And that is on, on tap for a special town meeting in November, hopefully. So we still have to hold a public hearing on that. We've held a public hearing on all four of these and only went ahead with the food truck one. So that's, that's it from Lennox on, on zoning.
So Mark, that was your decision not to put the other three forward? They weren't?
Yeah, because just, there were too many questions. The institutional uses one is, is, is kind of weirdly complex, although it's not even a page long. And, you know, it has to do with exempt, non-exempt, religious, educational uses in our, our zones and stuff like that. The sign by law is, 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 is pretty comprehensive and it's quite a bit more involved than the one that's on the record now, in this published one. And the fencing one, we just kind of hit the wall. No pun intended. So, you know, that, that will, all, these, these should all come up in, in special town meeting in November.
Thanks, Mark.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. At our annual town meeting insofar as zoning, the Planning Board held a public hearing related to citizens petitions. One particular petitioner took exception to recent zoning that was adopted on February 4th at our special town meeting. The first one dealt with exempting ADUs from all zoning regulations. The second one struck out in the zoning development standards. And the third one was to strike performance standards for non-exempt uses. All three, well, the first one was voted down strongly. The second two, the petitioner decided that he would amend both and was consequently ruled out of order according to state law, that, that was not allowed because the public hearing was not held on the amended petition. So they never got to a vote. But the really good news is what happened at our town election. Eggerman adopted the CPA at 3%.
Aye.
I'm, I'm curious as to whether any towns passed ADU bylaws in relation to, you know, the new state?
Coming up. Go ahead, Doug.
Doug?
I was going to ask whether Windsor passed a new ADU bylaw. We, we went through it, we sent it to legal. I went back and forth, modified what she said. She suggested I send it to the AG's office in advance with enough lead time that they could review it before annual town meeting. And I had our town administrator send it down with a request that it be reviewed, because the AG's office had promised in a webinar that they would review any ADU bylaws that were submitted by a given date, and we were 10 days before that date, never heard back from the AG's office. So I took that to the town meeting. We had had a public meeting, a pretty active town meeting about it. And it passed unanimously at, at the, at the, at the town meeting. But I still don't know whether when we submitted, they're going to say it's going to work, but we did our best.
Buck, do you?
Yeah, we, we, we had a, an ADU bylaw that we passed a couple of years ago, and then the state came in with their regulations. And their, their definition of, of where it was allowed was really put us, if anybody read that, it was as clear as the whole process of them developing the ADU law, which was, you know, it was interesting. But we brought, brought it to town meeting and one facet of it is we have restricted, if you have an ADU, you are not allowed to have an STR on either property, your primary or your ADU. So that's one thing that came out of that. Interesting. And I, I was, we were 52 minutes, our entire town meeting, really amazing. I don't know, we've gone from representative to open town meeting and I was hoping for more participation, but it's gone the other way. Very little. So may, maybe we're just doing things right and they trust us, I don't know. We, we also did an STR update and, because the state also changed some things there. And we're going to be implementing a software program that we purchased to track STRs. And a, we're going to have a full registration for them. So that was, the, the rest of the board did that. I, I recused out of it because I'm involved in that.
I have to say, the, the debate in our ADU was that, there was a lot of confusion at the webinars. We left in our bylaw that no more than one ADU can be constructed on any lot, because we're no town sewer, no town water, so on and so forth. And if you have enough property that you could put in, you know, a three septic systems and, and three wells, you could do an, in, in our subdivision. So.
Yeah.
The, the, the big confusion was they said, they, in one of their webinars, they said, if there was a, an ADU on a lot already that had been constructed with a, a special permit, this automatically says they can add another ADU.
Yeah, that, that is interesting. You know, we have certain zones where you need a special permit for residential. And it's like, so now they need a special permit for their house, but an ADU is by right? That was difficult. But nobody asked a question. It was amazing.
Well, we'll, we'll see what the AG says.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would like to say that, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Christine.
Um, I would like to say that I don't know the final outcome, but when I jumped off the meeting, the Stockbridge Board of Selectmen seemed very close to granting a permit for redevelopment of the Desisto property. And I think if you've read the papers for the last eight or 10 years, this has been an issue that has come up repeatedly. So I don't know that it passed, but it looks like, it was very close. They were talking about conditions. So we'll see. The one town meeting, one issue that we have is a citizens petition. The town received a notice that someone wanted to take the conservation easement off of his forest open land. And so the petition is to take $600,000, which is the amount of money that was, that the developer is willing to pay. So the town has the issue of whether or not they're going to pay the six, the money out of free cash, which will be devastating for our free cash this year. So that's going to be an interesting discussion. There's a lot of people on both sides, so typical town meeting, right?
Well, good luck.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark, you have something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to follow up on the ADU thing. The, we, there was an ADU bylaw in place before all the legislation from the state. And we rewrote our ADU bylaw in response to the draft legislation, a pretty, pretty down far along the line draft that they had presented. And it, it passed in December. We also had to tweak the STR bylaw to, to reflect that. Lennox allows for, we, we allowed for duplexes or twins, whatever you call them, you know, two-family buildings that could have an ADU in addition to a duplex with a special permit. So we, we went ahead with that. We, we thought, you know, let's get it out there and, and we, we got it out ahead of the legislation, ahead of the February by, by law. And with the idea that we could, we could tweak it in the winter.
The discussion. Anyone else? Next thing I'd like to hear is on future meetings is whether actually anybody's building ADUs with all these, the, the rights by rights to do it.
I know there's one going in in Lennox, and I think we have one in Lee so far that I know of.
Cool.
Which one in Lennox, Buck?
I think Rick Fiore is up on Dougway.
Uh huh, no, I, I don't, I don't know about that one. Okay. I mean, we're also trying to, we're, we're going to, we're going to be taking a, a hard look at zoning to allow for more housing, more affordable housing in Lennox, because it's, you know, you know, and then people can have ADUs on restricted lots and stuff like that. So that's, that's the next task there.
Right.
Because we don't have enough to do, honestly.
All right. Anyone else like to chime in? Okay, hearing none, then we'll, Tom, you don't have anything else to say on your?
No. I'm good.
Good. Then we'll proceed to the final order of business. A motion to adjourn? Anyone? Okay, thanks, Mark. Second? Anyone?
Second, Doug. Yep.
Okay, thanks. Then we will proceed to a vote.
John Dewal?
Yes.
Rob Radial? Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Mark Smith?
Yes.
Laura Mancy?
Yes.
Sheila Urban?
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Roger Bolton?
Yes.
And Doug McNally?
Yes.
Okay, we, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.